Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. It's seven o'clock. If you have a cellphone, can you please silence it? Just so that everybody's aware of the protocol. We'll go through the council agenda. It shouldn't take us very long. It's a relatively short agenda. At the end of the meeting, then, people are allowed to address the council. So, again, welcome. Thanks for coming, and if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. And is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have a mayor's proclamation designating May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week. City Council Bluffs Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are vital, are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of Council Bluffs. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works employees for the city and the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewages, and refuse disposal systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And where it is, is the public interest for the citizens, civic leader, and children to gain knowledge and maintain an interest and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And finally, whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel, whose staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, does hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014, as National Public Works Week in the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, and urges each and every citizen to pay tribute to the public works professionals and to recognize the contribution that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, and comfort and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have caused my signature and the official seal of the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, to be affixed here in the 19th day of May in the year 2014. And I don't believe we have anyone here from public works, but I'll make sure that gets to them tomorrow. All right, public hearings. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-136, approving the plans, specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Seventh Street Conduit Extension Program, fiscal year 1422A. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone that wishes to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-37, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement in connection with the utility relocation of Coxcom LLC. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who would wish to speak in opposition to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Discussion, please. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-138, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimates for the Vine Street Parking Lot Expansion Project. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-139, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the City of Council Bluffs in Potawatomi County with regards to the Burn Justice Assistance Grants Program Award. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak against? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Again, seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And, you have your first and second, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-140, granting a final plat approval for subdivision to be known as the Mall of the Bluffs. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Warren Headley with Naff and Harrison, 14710, West Dodge Road, Omaha, 68154. I'm the surveyor who prepared the plat. If the council has any questions on the notes that were sent out, I'd be more than willing to try to answer any of those.
Any questions? It seems very straightforward. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-141, granting final plat approval for a two-lot residential minor subdivision to be known as Roth's Westview Subdivision. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests tonight? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? Does the council have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions, Resolution 14-142, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Iowa Department Transportation Agreement Number U-2014-16035 in connection with sanitary sewer relocations required by the Council Bluffs Interstate Improvements and Railroad Consolidation.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolutions authorizing the Finance Director to certify to the Potawatomi County Auditor the annual drainage district assessments regarding Resolution 14-143 in the West Lewis Levy Drainage District, Resolution 14-144 regarding the Seek Levy Drainage District, and Resolution 14-145 regarding the Mosquito Creek Levy Drainage District.
Motion to approve Resolutions 6B-1 through 3 inclusive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 14-146 urging the governor to sign into law legislation enacted by the 85th General Assembly relating to live greyhound racing as the condition of obtaining or retaining a gaming license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
For those in the, in the audience, last January, this council passed a, a resolution in support of, of legislation then pending, asking that the legislature remove requirements for, for greyhound racing here at Bluffs Run Casino. We felt as though that was important to the city in order to free up that bit of real estate for, for potential better development that could bring more jobs and, and more infrastructure to the city, which would help the economy and, and the entire city as, as a whole. The legislature, at the very conclusion of its session, passed that law, both in the House and the Senate, obviously, and, and that bill is currently waiting signature by, by the governor, along with a large number of other bills that were passed during this legislative session. So, this is offering encouragement to the, to the governor that, that this is something that is important to the people of Council Bluffs, and we, we certainly urge him to sign that, that legislation into law.
And, and it is a prime piece of property with a lot of potential. One of the channel's news stations reported last night that there were more than 40 bills on the governor's desk to be signed, and, and so hopefully this action will bring it to the top of the pile and it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. So, that's the hope.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, 7A-1 through 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens with a written request to be heard?
None received.
And so this is the, the portion of the meeting where we'll allow public comment. I just want to, again, thank you for your attendance. I know it's been an emotional issue. Please try to keep it in a civil tone. This is not the time and place to attack individuals. I am the mayor of the city and responsible for the city. I will allow you great latitude in personally speaking to me, but if you want to attack anybody on the council or any other citizen, it really is out of order, and I'll have to call you out of orders. But before you speak, Lynn Branigan has asked that she could make a statement, and if you would allow her to do that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I'm speaking because Channel 7 kind of put my picture and name out there last week, even though I'm not on the board, but I've, I've been a volunteer since 1991, and actually this afternoon, I went through some old flash drives and, and I've, because I knew there was a file out there that I had accrued a lot of information, and I thought maybe some of you might be interested. So, Jody, if you can help me pass these out, and I apologize due to the wheelchair, I'm kind of sitting opposite, so I'm going to try to kind of move myself around if you'll bear with me just a second. Okay, and I wrote things down, so I didn't forget. First, I want to say thanks to all of the veterans who've served our country. I come from a, a large family of veterans, and just to share a few with you, my father was in the Navy, my brother, the Air Force, another brother in the Navy, another brother who was a very proud Marine. He died in August, and we, we honored his military service during the memorial. My uncle died in Vietnam, and a couple times I've visited the wall in Washington, D.C., and brought home with me the rubbing from the wall, which I treasure. Second, I just want to mention, echo the mayor, that the, the city council meeting is really, I don't believe, you know, the correct venue to discuss the parade, but the city has never organized a parade, nor will they in the future, and it was an event run by a completely separate group, but, but every council meeting, before we adjourn, we welcome citizen comments, and, and tonight is no exception. Third, to further clarify, the city council members didn't organize the parade, nor were any of us involved in any discussion or vote on any parade details. A couple of us serve on the Grand Marshal Selection Committee, and Nate's picture was also up on Channel 7, and from time to time, he offers legal questions or, or input when asked, but it happens very, very rarely, and none of us really attend any board meetings because we're not on the board. The city council does approve event permits, absolutely, but we don't delve into the details of the event beyond, beyond public safety issues and making sure all the departments signed off and reviewed the application. Over the years, I do remember several parade entries being rejected because they didn't reflect that year's theme, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this. The one I remember most is the group who wanted to include a huge billboard covered with aborted fetuses, and that definitely didn't match the theme of the parade that year, and they were, they were not allowed to, to march. And I think the theme that year was the legacy lived on, so it really didn't have anything to do with the theme. But last but not least, I, I truly believe personally that the, that the matter's been, you know, kind of inaccurately portrayed, and, and I want folks to know that some of the board members, from what I understand, have been personally attacked by email and phone call, as actually did I this week after my picture was on the paper. One guy sent me an email and said, you know, "Branigan, you should resign." And I said, you know, "Can, can I call you and let's talk about this?" And we had a conversation, and I explained some of the things that I talked about here tonight, and, and then, to my surprise, he apologized, and he said he didn't know. He kind of jumped the gun, and he thanked me for my service. So, that made me feel a little better, and I got several phone calls similar. But, you know, to answer his email, I really don't have the intention of resigning from the city council, and I look forward to, you know, continuing my years of service to the community for as many years as you'll have me. Even in this stupid ridiculous wheelchair, I come out and I help where I can. I announce the parade, I judge the barbecue competition, oh, and I announced the grand marshals down at the riverfront last, last Friday. So, I want to thank you for all your time and for listening, and with that, I guess we go back to comments. And I'm going to stay sitting this way so I can... Sorry, my bad.
You're fine.
My name is Ben Weiss. I reside in Glenwood, Iowa, and I am the president of the Philip H. Grego, Chapter 798, the Vietnam Veterans of America, and I will read a prepared statement here tonight. Mayor and members of the city council, the Vietnam Veterans of America, Philip H. Grego, Chapter 798, would like to first publicly thank all the veterans groups, police units, fire department units, and the many supporters of the Tiger Cage issue. We would also like to thank the committee for Celebrate CB, for the successful theme, CB Better Together. Nothing has brought more people and groups together to support veterans than the actions of Celebrate CB Committee. Before the parade, we tried quietly to resolve the issue of our iconic Tiger Cage in the Celebrate CB Parade, and were given several excuses by the committee why the Tiger Cage was to be excluded from the parade. Every time the committee was contacted, another excuse or reasoning was given to the VVA by a member of this committee. We were in contact with several of the members of the committee, and were told this was a committee decision, that it was unanimous decision of the committee. The parade rules are, at best, subjective and selective, and what floats or exhibits fit the rules and theme of the Celebrate CB Parade. At least three cages were in the parade this year, with live people in them. You would be hard pressed to apply the theme to some of the floats and exhibits that were presented in the parade. Now, there are many local and national news services that have picked this, picked up this news story and are watching to see the professionalism that is exercised to resolve this Tiger Cage issue, even though this parade is not a city event. The public perceive this as a city event on the public streets of the City of Council Bluffs and subject to laws and ordinances of the City of Council Bluffs. The Vietnam Veterans of America, Philip H. Grego, Chapter 798, has always been willing to have a meeting to discuss our iconic Tiger Cage with the committee for the Celebrate CB Parade. Again, we are extending our offer to have a meeting and would like to include the mayor of Council Bluffs as a supporter of veterans at this meeting. We would like to have this meeting within the next 10 days so that the Tiger Cage issue isn't forgotten and interferes with the planning of Celebrate CB Parade 2015. Now, I will say, I was contacted by Ms. Head, and she is trying to set up a meeting between the interested parties. So, I will get with her, and we will see if we can't set something up where everybody can meet.
And I did get a response back before, right before the meeting, from the Celebrate CB Committee, and they have all agreed, the board agreed, to meet, so we will set up a time that meets. I said I can't speak on every halfway you have to talk to you, but Celebrate CB Committee is definitely ready to meet with you whenever it's convenient.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't do it this afternoon, but I had interviews with WHO out of Des Moines and some others, and I just couldn't blow them off.
Totally understand.
Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Jorgensen and I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I'm here this evening to express my disgust with the committee that oversees the Celebrate CB Parade. I'm disgusted that this committee disallows the Council Bluffs Veterans Organization's Tiger Cage display from participating in Saturday's CB, Celebrate CB Parade. According to the, according to the parade organizers, the theme of this year's parade was CB Better Together. What the parade organizers have succeeded in doing is not to bring us together as a community, but to tear us apart in the name of political correctness. I am all for service and community organizations coming together to celebrate community, diversity, and common interest, but let's not leave out the celebration of sacrifice, especially as it pertains to the sacrifice that was paid by our military service men and women during times of war. Would the standards set by this year's parade organizers also disallow a, a display by the Council Bluffs Holocaust Victims Group, or the Council Bluffs Chapter of the Victims of 9/11? Sadly, the only conclusion we can draw is that organizations like these, whose sole purpose is to remind Americans what actual atrocities are, would not be allowed to participate. If we can't come together as community and celebrate the sacrifices paid by our valiant men and women in military uniform, then there's no reason for our community to celebrate anything. Thank you.
Lenny, before you get going, I don't want to interrupt you. There'll, there'll be plenty of time. You don't need to rush out, so if you just keep your seat until one's done, and we'll allow you in orderly fashion to come up.
Lenny Stiletta, I'm a Navy Vietnam veteran, and I've been insulted from the time I was in the Navy in 1965 to 69, by going through the San Francisco airports and have hippies stepping in front of me and different things. And to me, it, it might, I mean, you know, look at fact one way, but you look at this the other way, I feel insulted. And it, it, this is made national news, and it's kind of an embarrassment to the city. I'm kind of concerned, and I just, I'd just like to see it resolved, because as, as it was pointed out, there, there was more than one cage there, but it seems like this one was singled out because it was military or veteran, and that, that, that seems to be... I just don't like it. I, I don't want to, I don't want to get out of line here, be frictional, but I just want to express that I just didn't like that. I would like to see it resolved, and I would like to see that in there next time because it, it, it belongs there. I mean, if the NAAC wanted to put something in there about slavery, I would love it, because that's part of history, it's part of the history of the United States of America. And everybody in this, everybody in this country should feel offended that veterans were, were treated terribly in those prisons, and I, I know people. And, and so, I just feel like they, we ought to resolve this, where this can be put in there at another time in, in kind of an apology to them, and, and then we can just get on with it. And that's all I have to say.
My name is Jason Bliley, 406 Sabrina Circle. I understand a couple things. First of all, my father signed up for the Marine Corps during Vietnam. He signed up so as not to be drafted. By signing up, he was told he would be able to choose what branch he would be able to serve in. I cannot see out of my right eye. I am not a veteran. I do not have the right to even be in the room with these brave men and women who served our country. I understand that supposedly none of you were involved, and I respect the mayor and the council people here, but I must say that over 3,100 years ago, Aristotle spoke a word that resonates throughout history, and that is that A equals A. Reality is real. A thing is itself. Removing that cage does not make reality disappear, does not make history disappear. There are men who were captured, shot down, our grunts, our tunnel rats who were captured and kept in those kennels, never to be repatriated, alive or dead. This is shameful. And again, I do not point my finger at any of you. I appreciate that you have given us the opportunity to speak, or deny, I believe we all do. But I feel deeply that whenever there are veterans involved, all I can do is help them and thank them for what they've done for me, because I don't even deserve the right to stand in the same room with these men and women who fought and died and bled for my freedom to come up here and address you tonight. Thank you.
That's a real tough act to follow. My name's Justin Witchell, that's 35067AC, 51501, right here in town. I'm the commander of the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 5, in Council Bluffs. I want to thank all you for allowing me to speak here today. We, as the Disabled American Veterans, chose to step out because we're united in support of the other veterans, organizations. We will continue to support them in these actions. We feel that the denial for their cage was not warranted, for whatever reason. I also want to say that we're not actors, we're veterans, and to follow a theme, we don't put on costumes and dress up. We don't follow a theme. There may be a theme, but as far as us, what you see is what you get, defenders of the country. And I want you to know, from me and all those that I've spoken with, that it may be, hopefully, about children and fun and candy and things of that sort, but children cannot be born thinking that all those things are free, that all those things just come to them because they're citizens of the United States. The country is what it is, and it is free. Freedom is not free. It is free because of the men and women in this room and the veterans of this country. So, to tell them that they can't be there, or that they have to change their history in order to be there, is just wrong. I also want to say that personally, we're not looking for punishment, not even looking for apologies, not looking for retribution. All we want to do is to make sure this issue is settled so that it never happens again, so that we can do this in the following years and not be subjected to some creative rules or personal bias or issues, or whatever it may be. In fact, I don't care what those issues are. All I care is that those issues do not arise again, so like I said, we can be in this thing again next year and every year after that, and support our community as defenders of the community and the country as well. I also want to say that I remember, I remember both Colonel Ringenberg and Mayor Matt Walsh stopping by my house on their campaign tour, saw stickers in my window about being a veteran, and told me that they... and told me that they supported veterans. And I know you guys are in leadership positions in this town elected by the people of this town. And I would hope to see something happen to back up those premises. I personally believe in both of you and I believe that that'll be done. As I said, we want to see it solved. We've already been to the media and we will continue to do so. We will also do so on a state and national level as well. But before we do, we want to see what from these meetings, what transpires from these events, so that we know whether to tell, you know, our story as the community's going to help us, the leaders of the community are going to help us, or they are not. Either way, we just hope to see some successes and some changes in the following, maybe the themes pertaining to other groups or other events or, you know, people in town, but trying to tell veterans that, you know, they have to portray a certain theme or whatever when they do the same thing they've been doing every single year for years on end. Like I said, they're not actors and I don't think they should be subjected to a theme. I think they should be able to show up and say, hey, the reason we have candy and fun and friendships and all these other things are because of the sacrifices of the men and women of the Armed Forces of the United States. That's all I have, thank you.
My name is Russ Sweet. I'm a Junior Vice Commander with the DAV, Vice Commander of the American Legion, Quartermaster for the VFW. I thank you for your opportunity to hear me speak. In every generation, there are men and women who stand apart, they put on the uniform and put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, and most just world. They defend us in times of peace, times of war, and times of crisis, both natural and We honor soldiers, sailors, and airmen, Marines, and Coast Guardmen who render their highest service any American can offer. The patriots who stand sentry for our security are a proud link in an unborn chain that stretches This generation has distinguished itself on missions after missions, tour after tour. Because of the heroism, the Corps of Al Qaeda has steadily degraded and our homeland is more secure. Guys, I go for everything that you guys go and I normally keep quiet, but I'm a proud vet and I served my country honorably. And hopefully that you guys could get this resolved, because as people said before, what happened is we all came together as veterans. And technically, the third Saturday is supposed to be Armed Forces Day. It's supposed to. I thank you for your time and hopefully I didn't offend anybody.
My name is Al Ruby, United States Army, 101st Airborne, and also the Iowa Army National Guard. As Russ was saying, I want to speak a little part here where it says, now for I, Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, the Commander-in-Chief in the Armed Forces of the United States, continue to present and proceed in the office, do hereby proclaim that this, that the third Saturday of each month, the third Saturday of each May is Armed Forces Day. I direct the Secretary of Defense on behalf of you, the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marine Corps, and the Secretary of Homeland Security on behalf of the Coast Guard, to a plan appropriate observance each year with the Secretary of Defense responsibly encourage and participate, in the cooperation of the civil authorities and the private citizens. Me being a soldier, a father, a grandfather, my grandson seen part of the news and he asked me, he said, Grandpa, he said, what's the cage? And I told him, I said, the cage is where they took the American vet, the Vietnam vet, and they put him in there and they tortured him. And he goes, I want to learn more about this. Now, he's seven years old. And when the committee decided not to put that in there, and I explained to my grandson again, and it's no disrespect to the city, the council, or any committees, and I thank your family for the service that they give to us and what they did for the United States and for our freedom. But I also said, I said, sometimes adults make mistakes too and they don't understand what's going on, or maybe they made the wrong decision. And he looked at it, he said, well Papa, he said, when we make the wrong decisions, we get punished. How do you explain a seven-year-old child, there was something wrong, something done wrong, and who gets punished for it? My wife spoke and she said, we don't get punished for it, we just learn from our mistakes so you guys don't make the same. So, I'm asking the committee on behalf of my family who's military, the Vietnam vets, those who served in a cage, we have a congressman who would run for president, we had both arms broke, he can't even put them together. And I believe today with all my heart that there are still men and women in Vietnam in the jungle who hasn't come home yet. And if we take this cage away, then all that says is we don't care and allows our government to say, hey, you know what, smallest city can get by, but maybe the government can too. But I hope someday that they wise up and they go looking for the guys that are missing because I'll tell you, there's a lot of men on that wall in Washington DC whose name are on it who shouldn't be and I believe they're alive today. So, I thank you for your time.
You know, I'd just like to say, not only was it Armed Forces Day, but it's the 50th anniversary of the start of the Vietnam War. This has been a community that has, in recent years, celebrated its vets. As many of you know, we were at the Mid-America Center to wish them well when they went overseas. We were back again by the thousands to welcome them back, thank them for their service. And we learned that lesson unfortunately, I think, on the errors we made to the Vietnam War era veterans. And we will always regret the fact that we did not give them their due and we all want to thank you for your service. I don't think that anybody intended to intentionally slight the organization. I honestly believe that. I don't think they had an appreciation for how deeply it offended you. I had a conversation today with a three-tour duty vet, one tour in Vietnam, member of the Legion, member of the VFW, who offered to go forward as a liaison with all the armed services groups. And the, or the Celebrate CB Committee has not affirmed that yet. I haven't had a chance to talk to them. They haven't had a meeting to give the okay in doing that. But I think that's a good step going forward. I think we all learned lessons. On behalf of the citizens of Council Bluffs, I first want to thank you for your service and second, apologize if you were in any way offended, and I know that you were. But in the best interest of the city of Council Bluffs, as many of you've said tonight, please let's go forward in a positive manner and really make this community what it is. And I know other members of the council probably would like to address you too.
I want to personally thank each and every one of you for coming out. I think you all know where I stood on this matter and more importantly, the community and the nation better understands where you stand on this issue. As unfortunate as this whole episode may have been, what it's done is it has brought together a tsunami of support for Vietnam veterans and what they went through as well as the veterans community in general. I have been deeply moved, I've been deeply moved by the reaction of the police and fire unions. I was moved by the reaction of the media and the public as a general. And I think that you have brought honor to yourselves and I salute.
George, are you coming up?
Mayor, I have one quick question.
Yes.
Why are there no veterans groups represented on this parade committee?
There had been in the past. I don't know why there wasn't currently. Again, today I had a vet stop forward who in the past had been a member of the committee. He said, I've done three tours. He's a combat veteran, he's a member of the Legion, he's a member of the VFW. He says, please let me act as a liaison between the veterans groups and the committee. And so, we think that is part of the solution. If you have requested that everybody get together and talk through it, it may not be the ultimate solution, it may not be an adequate solution, but in the next ten days, we certainly hope to work that out.
Thank you. George.
Hi, my name is George Wickman. I own Wickman Drywall, United States Marine Corps Veteran. I just want to say, I've lived in Council Bluffs for 54 years. And if you guys don't stand behind us, we don't have a chance. This is, this is one thing that should have never happened. Somebody with some power should have stepped in and intervened. It was our day to shine. You know, to not have the cage in the parade, how do you, how do you expect to teach your children life issues? Freedom isn't free. The Vietnam veterans, I'm not a Vietnam veteran, I'm after that era. I remember as a little kid, watching the KIA's, MIA's on TV every night. That's what I remember. The cage is another part, it's a symbol. It's like the Marines raising the flag on Iwo Jima. It's a symbol of the Vietnam veteran. Please don't let this happen to us again. This is Council Bluffs, Iowa. This is the middle. This is, this is, this is God's country, it's USA. Please don't let this happen to us again. Thank you.
And George, you ask a question and from some of the signs, I get the impression that the people thought it should have been me that stepped in. And quite frankly, until Friday morning, I did not receive a single phone call, one way or the other. On Friday, I received two calls in the morning. And I know it's going to sound weak, but it wasn't a city issue and so for the government to intervene in the issue, I don't know, without somebody asking us to, and until today, nobody really asked me to, other than I got two phone calls from people that expressed their displeasure, so.
May I ask one question? Your staff member is on there, the city council, there's two members on there. And I believe that this is called a conflict of interest. When you have two city members and a mayor's secretary, I believe she's your secretary.
No, she's not.
Okay, so she's on your staff, right?
She is the chief of staff.
I believe that when you put that type of party together, that it is a conflict of interest because everybody should be neutral and let the city council be the city council and the committee be the committee. Because when you take the city council and you put them together and you take somebody that's on the staff of the mayor, what's that look like to a bunch of vets? It's just like, you know what, there's nothing we can do or nothing we can say. So, we're asking you folks, please, let's get this straightened out so like they said, it never happens again. And let's make sure the right people are on the committee and this doesn't go any further than what it did.
And just for explanation, Al, Nate Watson is pro bono offering legal counsel and my understanding from people I've talked to has not done that for over four years. Not because he's not willing to do that, they just haven't needed it. Lynn Branigan is a former executive board member, retired from that last year, wasn't on. And my chief of staff was not the chief of staff of the city when she volunteered last year to be on the committee. Now, again, it was a committee decision and apparently was an inappropriate decision, but I don't think it was a decision made with any malice, any intent to offend, it just was not understood. You've helped to bring an understanding of the importance of that and as many of you said tonight, let's go forward, let's make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Patricia Murphy. I think I know most of you. I don't want to make any waves or anything, it's just that when this story first broke, I've tried to follow every little bit of it and I'm just really disappointed that it got to the point that the veterans weren't allowed to have the cage in the parade. I'm, I don't know how it got this far because I know it was in the news and I know, but ever since I've lived in Council Bluffs for the past 30 years, the parade in May has been the Pride Week Parade and the city's been involved in it somewhat. You know, so if they are not involved in it anymore and it's a separate entity.
Never been involved.
Well, if it isn't, everybody thinks of it as a city parade. It's a Pride Week Parade for Council Bluffs, Iowa. And we all come to the parade, you know, and appreciate the veterans and seeing them in it. And it's disappointing to me that they, you know, they weren't allowed to have their cage in there. And I know that some people are saying now that the Holocaust didn't happen, it's 70 years. And because, you know, they don't know about it in their lifetime. Well, of course, I grew up in the Vietnam era, so I know about it and I appreciate that cage and, you know, reminding us of what our veterans did. And if my grandchildren see it, I have no problem with it, I don't care what age they are, it's a learning experience and I appreciate what the veterans did. I'm not holding grudges against any of you for what happened. I just would hope that this never, ever happens again in Council Bluffs. It's bad for our image, people all over the United States are talking about it. And if it wasn't for the veterans, we wouldn't have any parades. I think anytime a veteran wants to, anytime a veteran wants to march, anytime in a parade in Council Bluffs, anything should be done to give them that opportunity to show, you know, what they've done for our country.
And just while you're up there, Pat, they, the parade was started by Raj Chopra, who was the superintendent of the Council Bluffs School System in the early 70s and until 1978, the Council Bluffs School District ran the parade. In 1978, a nonprofit organization was formed and since that time, they've run the parade. It is their parade, they pay for the permits, they pay the overtime for the police to control traffic and keep order, they pay for the cleanup after the parade. There are, and I'd seen something, as long as taxpayer dollars go to that, taxpayer dollars don't go to that. It's done by the nonprofit organization.
Well, I think that anytime there's a parade that represents our city, that the veterans should, you know, get to march in it, that's all. And I don't care who started it. Thanks.
My name's Tom Hoefling, I'm from up in Calvin County. I drove 125 miles to be here tonight to stand with the veterans. Now, I want to offer a quote from Jesus Christ himself. He said, greater love has no man than to lay his life down for his friends. So, I want to say that what that cage represents actually are men who were willing to give up their own lives or even what might have even been worse than being in one of those tiger cages before they died. So, I was horrified by this story and it compelled me to come. So I was horrified by this story and it compelled me to come down here. And I just want to say that Jesus also said, "Blessed are the peacemakers." So you have these men and women who served their country honorably, as did my son in Iraq, as did my father in Korea, as did my uncle in the Italian campaign, as did my grandfathers in the Civil War and the War of 1812 and the Revolution. Okay? So if you want to get past this, my advice, and I can't tell you what to do, of course, but my advice to you is, you know, you got a nice park out here, have a parade, seriously. And I'm speaking to you, Mr. Mayor, lead it, really. This is about celebrating Council Bluffs and I want to tell you that there is nothing that is more laudatory, more to be celebrated than the sacrifice of our men and women in uniform. So I would recommend that you find a way to bring this community together and honor these people, because that's what will heal, that's what will bring people together. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
My name is James Bridges. I am the adjutant and the treasurer for the Disabled American Veterans, chapter number five, here in Council Bluffs. And I was glad to hear that the mistake that was made concerning the tiger cage was done out of ignorance rather than animosity, because I would hate to think that anyone had that kind of feeling toward Vietnam veterans still. The ignorance part of it is inexcusable and it can only be alleviated through education. Now, history has always been a very important subject with me. And the history of the Vietnam War, unfortunately, like a lot of other history, has been lost over recent years. So any opportunity that our children and grandchildren can be exposed to that history is a good one. So I hope that the committee members who are listening tonight understand that I bear them no ill will, but if ignorance was the issue, if the ignorance of the importance of the tiger cage was the issue, if they felt that the tiger cage was inappropriate, then I say that they need to know their history and they need to know exactly the meaning of the tiger cage and they need to know how that history, that understanding, is the only way that Council Bluffs can be better together. Thank you for the time.
While we're waiting for somebody else to come forward, can I say something real quick? Because I'm reviewing the history that I think some of you probably have read. And the thing that struck me, and I don't remember what we do from year to year, I know that they absolutely try to do every year different, but it did strike me that in 1991, the parade theme was Pride in Our Freedom and as grand marshal, all the local vets were the grand marshal. And then again, in 2002, Heroes Among Us, once again, the military veterans were grand marshal. That's about 10 years in between and we've had another 10 years or so in between. So it might be time for another theme that reflects, you know, what we're talking about tonight and once again have the veterans be the grand marshals in the parade. So I just wanted to interject that.
I, you know, I'd like to briefly speak if I may, you know, speaking, I think it's always dangerous to bring up a guest's ages, but I think there are two of us up here, me included, who when the last helicopter left the embassy, weren't born for a few more years. And so to us, we learn it from, in both our cases, I think, family members who were there, or much of it, quite frankly, in the history books. And growing up in an age of the Gulf War, I think, was the first that I really remember, probably the same for Melissa, to fathom a world in which the vet was not honored is very foreign to my generation. We don't understand it. I think there are a lot of people in society that easily forget. I think it's, if anything, good can come out of anything. And I think some good can come out of this and I think we ought to focus on that. It's that in our events, we need to remember and understand. And, you know, there are a lot of people who serve on these various committees. The mayor's correct, I haven't been active on that committee in years. The website was outdated. A local TV station put it up and they didn't call me to ask if it was accurate. It's not. But I'm not going to sit here and trash the members of that committee either, because I think they made a genuine mistake, as I've said. I think it was a terrible mistake, but I think it was a mistake not born of ill will. I think this is an excellent example for why we need to, you know, I have been on many different committees throughout town. There are a lot of us, quite frankly, the reason why so many committees have council members on them is we struggle in this day and age when so many people are so busy with their lives to get enough folks to be on committees. We constantly send out emails, we make phone calls, we even go, sometimes we target door to door with people specifically and we just don't get enough people on these committees. And sometimes I think perhaps that committees don't know where to look. I think this is an excellent example. I think you've all raised a very good idea of on these committees, which devote thousands of man-hours a year to this event, I think there ought to be veterans on it and I imagine they would welcome it. I can't speak for them, I'm not on the committee, but I have no doubt that you'd be willing to put in the time to help them, to understand and help this event. The more that we have folks involved in this, the better. Again, I think this issue is one that I think we are truly better together if we remember our history and we work together. I am honored by the dignified way that you had your vigil. I won't call it a protest, because I don't think that honors it. I think you did it very admirably. You, the children had their parade and you made your point and the vast majority of the people in that parade, if not to a man, didn't disagree with you. They were there fulfilling their role for the children and for the other events. In my case, for the neighborhood groups I've worked so hard with over the years, got an honor of grand marshal, and I owed them a duty to be in there with them. I wasn't going to pull out and say no to them. And I think there's not a person up here who can't say something similar. We don't have direct control over this committee. Government shouldn't control organizations. I don't think anyone's saying that, but I do get your point. It is a parade that reflects and is emblematic of our city and so I think you've exercised quite respectfully the rights that you fought and many of your friends and colleagues died for. And I am not a veteran, so I can only imagine what you have gone through so that I can be alive and sit up here today or be anywhere alive. And on behalf of my generation, I want to thank you and say that we very much value you. We want you to stay involved. And I think some good can come of this. Today, I was talking with some members of the committee. They're horrified, they're mortified, the vast, vast majority of them, that what their decision was taken to be, and most of them, not everyone, most people believe it was a mistake. And they genuinely want to meet with you. And Melissa and I and others have been reaching out to different groups to try to arrange these meetings so that this does not happen again. You've been heard and I don't think there's a single one of us up here who disagree with you. I certainly do not.
And we typically only allow one time, but I told you I'd give you latitude tonight, so.
I might have a little bit of a solution. Again, Russ Slate, why don't we just make it a theme every year? Pride, Council Bluffs Pride slash Armed Forces Day. Nobody could be offended. Everybody would be happy and we would be coming together as we should in the first place. That's just me talking. But Mr. Walsh, you know, I can make you an offer you can't refuse.
We'll sit down and discuss that. Please, can you come up though to the microphone, because people at home can't hear what you're saying if you don't.
People at home? Oh, I didn't know this was being broadcast.
Oh.
I'm skinny.
Well, I'm guessing more than Channel 17.
I think it might run more than one.
My name is Jim Carney. I'm district commander for the American Legion. I'm also a member of the chapter of the VVA in regards to this. There's a few things. I'm going to keep it very short. The country, and this is, a couple of them are very old quotes. "The country that does not remember its heroes is soon forgotten." History is being expunged from our history books or rewritten. Another very old quote, "Those who refuse to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name's Michael Thompson. I live here in Council Bluffs and I was standing at the parade with the veterans that day. And I've almost got as many questions now as I did then. I hear, well, this decision was a mistake, it was ignorance, but we haven't heard really, what was it that didn't fit into the theme? What was the theme? Community together?
Better Together.
Together?
Better Together.
Better Together, except for the veterans?
Yeah.
This is your community right here. These aren't just veterans. These are grandfathers, fathers, uncles, brothers, sisters, mothers. This is the Council Bluffs community. What did not fit with that cage into the theme of the parade, Better Together?
I think we agree with you, sir. You've got us, you'd have to, with all, with the greatest respect, you'd have to ask them. I don't know.
Well, and I'll speak third hand and I don't, again, I have not met with the committee, I have not met with the Vietnam veterans group, so I am absolutely no expert in speaking just based on assumption. But I think the thought was that, and I may be wrong and I guess I'm subject to being wrong a lot, but the cage was in the parade many years ago and at that point was removed and hadn't been in for several years. And then last year was in the parade again and it didn't fit with the theme. It's a parade, and I'm not telling anything I hadn't said before. I honestly think my integrity is beyond reproach, because I'll tell you what I think. Their thought was that last year, the cage was in there and it is intended to have shock value and it did that. And people said, what's that have to do with the theme? We don't understand. And so then, this year, when they applied for the permit, they said, "This is the theme. Please tailor your float, if you're going to have a float, you can walk, the honor guard can walk, but if you're going to have a float, tailor it to the theme." And they didn't appreciate, I honestly, I honestly didn't have never recognized the tiger cage as a symbol of the Vietnam War and I don't think they did either.
Mr. Mayor, as the father suspect.
I'm just telling you honestly what, and we've talked about, I know you're shaking your head, and we talked about that in some cases, it's from ignorance. I'm telling you, I didn't recognize it as a symbol of the Vietnam era and I was in that era. I had friends that went to Vietnam. I've heard stories about Vietnam. I'm a supporter of the veterans. They just didn't get it, I don't think. And he's asking me what it was. They didn't get it. They said, "Do a float that fits with the theme." The Rose Bowl has a theme, the Rose Parade, all, many parades have a theme. And they're saying, "It doesn't fit with our theme." They didn't appreciate what it meant to you. And that's why they did it.
Mr. Mayor, you're incorrect in your statement that the parade, the float was taken out of the parade for a number of years. It was not in the parade for a number of years because it was stolen from us. And this new one has just been built for about three years.
Well, and you heard me when I said, I'm saying this subject, because I've heard it third hand and I may be wrong. And I tried to couch it that way, because I could be incorrect. And quite frankly, you were incorrect the other day too, so we're even, I guess. Mr. Mayor. And I'm not being mean. We've talked and we've worked it out and we have a good understanding and that's how we're going to work through this, so, yeah.
You know, you're right, we do need to move on and I've been quiet, because I really wanted to hear everything all of you had to say and how much I appreciate you being at that podium tonight. But I saw the heads shaking when Matt was saying what he was saying and I'm going to readily admit, I wasn't offended by the cage, but I didn't know what it was. There's no context. I had history class, I was raised in the area, but I was very young, so I wouldn't have understood most of that. But I never, in any class I ever took in school, anything I've ever studied, because I didn't study the Vietnam War, I'm dependent on what I learned in school, I can tell you, I didn't know what it was. And if that makes me bad, I'm willing to admit to you right now, my ignorance, but I didn't know what it was.
And I don't think the committee did. And I don't, I don't think that it's a shock value thing.
I didn't know.
I don't think that any of these veterans intended it to be a shock value thing. If you want to equate that to an abortion sign, which is highly political, maybe there's a conflict of interest with trying to insulate city council from the committee, if we have city council on the committee. I don't think there's a theme out there that the veterans shouldn't be leading the parade in. That's, and that, that, that cage, that cage may be a question for any of their children or grandchildren, or my grandchildren or your children, to say, "What is that daddy?" And then be able to say, daddy, or son, or daughter, that's the kind of thing that our soldiers had to go through so that city councilmen and women could be elected, so they could be, and mayors could be elected and they could be on committees and we could have parades like we did that day.
Well, the upside of all this is, I now know what the cage is, so if my granddaughter asks me, I'll be able to answer the question, but I can honestly tell you that until this issue arose, had my children asked me what it was, I would have had to have said, "I don't know." So, I understand that's a failing on my part, but I saw a lot of heads out there shaking when the mayor was saying that and I really want you all to know that although you believe we should all know, we don't all know. So there's an education that evidently isn't happening, because I was aware of the sacrifices that were made by our soldiers. I was not aware of what this cage was. I saw the bamboo cage, I saw the mannequin in it, but I had no idea what it was. So my hope is that now, anybody like me that didn't know what it was, they now know. And I think that that is another good thing that has come from this.
You can sit up front here and we'll get you next.
I know we're only supposed to do this once, so I thank you. Appreciate your leniency. If anybody could, I know everybody's really a hot emotional issue, everybody's really heated and wants to say something, but if you could just let me say what I got to say, please. It's an educational issue, the tiger cage. Those of us in the veteran community who are associated with Vietnam veterans, understand the meaning of that. A lot of people are not educated, but this is an educational issue. This is a school issue. This is not an issue for the board here, this is not an issue for the committee, it's not an issue for anything like that. It's also not the veterans, the Vietnam veterans' job to educate people. If they choose to, they most certainly can, but it's also not the committee's job to educate people on that issue. So I think there's a misunderstanding here. That's not what I'm talking about though, I just wanted to get that out of the way. The reason I requested to come back up here again is the issue of us and themes. This issue of a theme keeps coming up and as I had stated earlier, my belief in the veterans having to adhere to a theme, when the only reason there can be a theme is because of the service of the veterans. There should not be a theme that applies to veterans, in my opinion. Now, if that theme no longer exists for veterans, we will no longer have this issue. Veterans can continue to do what they do as they have always done in the parade, as they rightfully should do. And as far as whoever leads the parade, or once every 10 years, I don't care, because every 10 years is not good enough, when every single year is because of the veterans. Every freedom that they love, all those candy and children that love to have a good time, the education there comes from the sacrifice of the veterans and because of those sacrifices are the reason they get to enjoy those freedoms they have today. are the reason they get to enjoy those freedoms that they have today. That's why I don't feel that there's any veteran that should be subjected to a theme. Like I said before, we're not costumes, actors, we don't put on things and go play. What you see is what you get right now. What you've got is a lot of upset people and a lot of very disappointed people who rightfully or wrongfully blame the city because it's in the city and it is called the Celebrate CB Parade. Either way, we're celebrating CB and it was supposed to be Better Together. The one thing we weren't there for was the parade. Veterans weren't there, yet it was addressed as a success, quoted as a success in the news. Celebrate CB Together, right? Better Together was a success, yet none of the veterans' organizations were in it. To me, that's not success. In fact, that's a bunch of, you know what, I ain't gonna say it on the air, but you know exactly what I got right here. Anyway, back to that, I just hope that in the future, every ten years and all this other stuff, none of that stuff matters. What matters the most is that we as veterans and all of the veterans who aren't here and the eight thousand something veterans that are registered voters in Potawatomi County can make sure that this does not happen twice and that we don't have, we do not have to adhere to a theme created by a board. Now, that may be great for all of the other organizations and I think that's festive and fun and that's great, but veterans shouldn't have to be subjected to that. What they are is what they are because of what they did, not because of some theme, not because they're playing something on a certain day or trying to pretend. Okay? That's all I got. Thank you.
My name's Derek Sherland. I'm recently retired, medically retired from United States Army as of April twenty-eighth of this year. I moved back to Council Bluffs because this is where my family is. This is where I grew up and this is where I wanted to raise my children. I've been gone for twelve years. I've served three engagements in Iraq and two engagements in Afghanistan. And because of those, I can't finish off a full career in the military. The first, and as anybody who's been in the military would obviously know, first impressions are everything. After twelve years of being away, my first impression of this city is that that they denounce and reject their veterans from what I was raised to know as the culmination of community for Council Bluffs. You said it was because of a misunderstanding or because you didn't understand what it was, but were the questions asked before the denial? That's all I really have.
Very good.
Pretty much fifty years of being here. You didn't understand, you have great statistics, a lot of history that you can dig up. The firemen do not adhere to a theme. The police do not adhere a theme. They are police, they are firemen. We are veterans. I served eight years. I'm proud to have been a veteran. I'm proud to be a veteran. If you didn't know what that thing was with a man in a cage, you couldn't tell that that wasn't a prisoner or something horrible, you needed to ask.
I certainly knew it was something horrible. I didn't ask.
Okay, you needed to ask, but you weren't one on the committee, I don't believe.
And this is, this is the thing, this is really, I am so glad everybody came out tonight because that what's happening is, this is being aired out to the public. So people are being aired.
But like you said, it should be a yearly event that the veterans can be there.
I agree.
Whatever they've got.
I, I agree.
As we are.
They should. But, but I don't feel like that it's fair for you to look at me and say, you should have known.
Well, you, you answered it to everybody here.
If I don't know, then other people don't know. And that's how misunderstandings happen. Because I didn't know.
Okay, but you openly admitted that you didn't know. And that's why I said you.
I absolutely will.
Well, and so did I do.
I absolutely, I completely admit that.
And so you, yeah. If you didn't openly know, as old as we are, you didn't learn history in school.
No, they didn't teach it.
Okay. We're beating a dead horse. I just hope it does change like we've all said, and I do hope that the veterans are involved every year, irregardless.
I do too.
They should be right up there with the police and firemen, not me. They should be there. That's why the police and firemen were also on our side.
I agree. And I apologize if I was on the case.
Can you come up, please? Yeah, we, we are, and quite honestly, for what you did, we'll sit here till hell freezes over because you deserve it. And, and so, but Ben, but we do want you to know that Ben and designees from whoever you decide and in the committee, I think has agreed, Melissa has talked to the committee, they've agreed to meet what role I can play, I'm happy to play. Again, I think we've gotten some of that resolved today by getting a vet on the committee. And as Nate said, if, if you have other volunteers that want to be part of it, we'd love to do it. And we have, you know, I know one day's not enough, but we have a Veterans Day Parade that I've been privileged to ride in and walk in. And we celebrate our veterans here. We, we don't, and I don't think anybody intentionally meant to diminish your service. I just think there wasn't an understanding. It, it was in the mind of the committee a float. And it was a float that had been the same theme for several years. They just didn't understand. I don't think that, I'm telling you, I fully didn't understand, so.
My name's Nicholas Dick. I was in the Korean War. And the reason I want to talk to you about it is that the Cajun Vietnam, Vietnam veteran assures that in the Korean, nobody mentioned the brainwashing, turn coats, or anything, so it's been forgotten. Don't let Vietnam be forgotten. As Korean veterans have been pushed back, they don't mention why Chinese mistreated us. I have a completely wounded over there, so, but I just want to bring up one, don't let Vietnam go down like the Koreans did. And I wrote a book, The Not Forgotten War, and I'll give you one, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Brendan Flanagan. I was a veteran from the Iraq War. I'm retired now. I, I grew up just a man in love with America, with the Great Experiment, just like all these men here. It was said that you just couldn't imagine just veterans not being honored. Well, our wounds go deeper than just the stuff that we've received in war, in combat, and it goes deeper than just, just not being understood by a float or not being understood by a cage. If you want to see vets mistreated or misunderstood, visit a coast, New York or, or California. Go to a VA hospital. Our, daily, we just get mistreated and misunderstood. It's, it's more about just the respect of it all than anything else. There's the aspect of the history and like you said, it's just beating a dead horse by now, but we just need to just come to the conclusion of it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I hope, I hope that, you know, some of the, what I, what I'm hearing here tonight kind of, kind of shocks and surprises me and, and no war should be forgotten, Vietnam, Korean, the things that, that transpired. And it makes me ask the question, I mean, are our children being taught?
No, no. Absolutely not.
And, and I hope that tonight's meeting, the school board or teachers are listening and they're realizing that there is a huge disconnect and a need, a clear need to educate the kids. You can educate your own kids and grandkids and nieces and nephews, but that doesn't cover everybody. Not every family has a veteran. And, and I think it's, it's incumbent upon the school system to make sure that nothing gets lost. The Holocaust doesn't get erased like some people are trying to do. That everything is important, but I think the schools have to step up and make sure it's being hap, being done. The education is happening. And I'm sorry.
You need to get rid of Common Core education.
Amen. No idea what Common Core education is.
That's what the government implements to the teachers, what to teach your kids.
Al.
Thank you.
No, I've never heard of it.
I appreciate you letting me come, I appreciate you letting me come back up here. We know that the, the third Saturday of May is, you know, all about the vet, but I, I'd like to see the City Council not only have it the Armed Forces Day in Council Bluffs, but I would also like to see them proclaim that it'd be also be the Vietnam Vet Day too. I think that's important because that's gonna bring everybody together. And I think that if you get a hold of the Vietnam vets and people at the schools want to know and want to be educated about it, I'm sure this gentleman would be more than happy to give a number to any school, whether it's Omaha, Council Bluffs, it doesn't make a bit of difference where it's at. And they'd come and talk to you because we can't fathom what they went through. I can only tell you what my uncle has told me, the things that he went through. And we have a lot of guys in here that are in, we have tunnel rats in here. And if you guys know what a tunnel rat is?
I do.
A tunnel rat is a man who went in with just a pistol and he went in to flush them out. They were in caves, they were in holes that were so huge that they had operations in these, in these tunnels. So if you let these guys speak to you, you're gonna learn an education because it's not any different than the guys in the Cold War where they had to wrap claws around their feet to keep them warm. Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to clarify in an earlier statement because everybody kind of went, what'd he say? But Ben and I were talking on Sunday and I think Ben felt that the Council Bluffs Fire Department had pledged not to walk and that they walked in the parade and that was not true. They, that was a fire honor guard from another city, the Council Bluffs Fire Department and Police Department, neither one walks.
Thank you for clarifying that, sir.
And while you're coming up, I'll just speak briefly, there's been plenty to say about all this, but first and foremost, I do want to thank each and every one of you here that served our country. I know without a doubt we live in this country's freedom because of you, so thank each of you for your service and for your sacrifices. I know many, many of you went through horrible things. I, like Nate said, was not alive during many of the wars, but I did spend time, I'm not a vet, I'm not gonna claim to be a vet, but I did spend several years in Iraq during the Iraq War. So I seen firsthand what can happen to people in a time of war when you go through hard times. So I do, I'm very sorry that you guys were excluded from the parade. I have been working with the board and with Ben and his group to try to hopefully get a meeting because I know many of the board members are also very, very sorry for what has happened. So we are hopefully gonna get resolution and just want to say thank you for being here and for what you have done.
Sir?
Ted Duit, Council Bluffs, Operation Desert Storm. I apologize, I'm not, I was not planning on coming up tonight, but listening to everything that has been said here today reminded me of something that happened actually just yesterday. And a variety of people were at, were at this event. The National Veterans Awareness Ride came through Council Bluffs yesterday. They don't go to Omaha, they go to Council Bluffs because Council Bluffs has always appreciated its vets. Now, I come from, I lived twenty years in San Diego and the West Coast where they did not really appreciate their vets, even though they had a ton and a half of them. Now, when they came in, they knew what had happened. And it was not a pleasant experience to have these gentlemen come through, these ladies and gentlemen come through and honor us by standing at our wall in Bayless Park and know that there was an issue on our parade. Now, I don't necessarily believe in a whole lot of coincidences, but when the bikes came through, there was a priest that happened to be driving by. And he stopped and he asked what was going on. So he was told what was, that this was a veterans awareness ride. And the ironic thing was, is this priest was from South Vietnam. He, his father had served alongside Americans in South Vietnam. During the luncheon that happened at the Mason's Hall afterwards, he got up and he spoke to the veterans, a lot of them who had been in Vietnam. And for a very, very short amount of time, there was a small amount of healing that happened in that event. Something that a lot of vets don't get. I would really impress upon this council to impress upon the parade committee and the teachers and everybody else to make sure that they understand, as has been said here before, wounds go very deep. You look at a person, you'll see a body. You don't see the wounds that they've been holding for ten, fifteen, twenty years, or even ten or fifteen months for these kids that are just coming back. Please, you have an opportunity here to educate and to heal. Take that opportunity. Thank you.
With the exception of City Councilwoman Brannigan, who obviously can't stand, please stand and let's recognize our veterans.
My name is Larry Mendenhall and I think I picked the wrong night to bring you. Even though I'm a vet. My name is Larry Mendenhall. I've lived in this town eighty-one years. I've got a problem in my neighborhood. I have tried to reach people to help me and I'm not having any success. I have a neighbor that moved in across the street. He's been convicted twice of drug charges. He is repairing cars. He's doing a lawnmower repair service. I doubt if he has a tax permit. I doubt if he is capable of doing. I have submitted some photos of what this looks like. He has seven cars, they're in the yard, he has a trailer parked back there that is not on concrete. I've turned this in to health authorities and all and I, I turned it into the state, they're supposed to do some surveillance. They spend two months, three months or more and I'm not getting any satisfaction. I pay taxes on three properties I own on that street. I've been there since sixty-four, I think I need a little help.
Did you give us your address, sir? Did you, did you give us your address?
I live at two seventeen, the problem is at two twenty-four across the street.
On what street?
I have, on McGee. I have a list of twenty-one cars that have been there in a week. They drive up, they go behind the fence with a cooler, they come out with a cooler, get in their cars and drive away.